Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Work Session. It's Monday, August 19th, 2024. It's 10:03 a.m. My name is Tom Webster, Chair of the Board. My left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier. Commissioners Edwards, Claus, and Mejia are on Zoom. County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Rob Gelder and Robin Campbell. Public virtual attendance available this morning on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We have a two-hour block of time if required, and we have two agenda items. Number one, Franz Anderson Permanent Supportive Housing Funding Plan. Tom Webster, morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Webster with Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. So here to provide an update on Franz Anderson Permanent Supportive Housing Funding and kind of update on the plan of the allocation of those funds. So I want to start off by saying we are not requesting any new funding or we're not adding any new projects. All the projects we're talking about today have already been approved. We're really just talking about which fund sources are going to fund which projects. And so there's been some change in that. So some of you may, I know are aware of this, but just to provide a little bit of context. So back in February of 2022, the Board of County Commissioners approved an interlocal agreement with the City of Olympia to acquire a piece of property off of Franz Anderson Road, which is off of Lily Road near here. That was originally going to be used for safe parking of recreational vehicles that were parked on Ensign Road. That did not happen. That site has since been utilized under the Right-of-Way or Encampment Resolution Program for permanent supportive, tiny home village for that, with a long-term plan for development of permanent supportive housing on that property. Then in spring of 2023, City of Olympia issued an RFP, or Solicitation of Interest, to find a developer develop permanent supportive housing on that property, which they did. And then in the fall of 2023, the Board approved an interlocal agreement with the City of Olympia, City of Lacey, and City of Tumwater to commit funding to this project. As part of that process, the county committed 3.5 million of ARPA SLURF, the state local fiscal recovery funds, to that project. And that's identified in the ILA that those were the funds the county was going to commit. The selected developer who's going to develop that property is the Low-Income Housing Institute, or LEHI. This is a roughly 70 units, 71 units of housing will be developed on this site. They submitted an application to the state for housing trust fund dollars as well as low-income housing tax credits. That is a competitive process. They were not successful in that application and therefore puts the timing of that project back a little bit. As I'm sure you're aware, the ARPA funds must be obligated by December 31st of this year and expended by December 31st of 2026. The interlocal agreement serves as the obligation, however, with the delay, there's some concern of whether the funds will be fully expended by the 2026 deadline. LEHI intends to resubmit their application to the state this fall. We're cautiously optimistic that that will be funded, but it is a competitive process. Sometimes it takes two or three rounds of applications before you're funded. However, in the event that it was not funded this year and things get further delayed, that really puts that expenditure deadline at risk and we're unable to re-obligate those funds after this December deadline. So there was a request from the Board to say, hey, what are some other projects? Can we move some money around to find other projects to use this? 3.5 million dollars to make sure that these funds get spent. So our office through the request for proposals that we had earlier this year solicited applications. And so we've identified four projects that are able to move forward quickly this year that we can be under contract before the end of this year that we think is a good fit for kind of, in a sense, reallocating these funds. And so two of them are Homes First projects. Homes First is looking to acquire a fourplex as well as a single-family home. Both of those projects are essentially ready to go, and they're looking to acquire those in October. The third project is a Housing Authority project called Sequoia North. Housing Authority is looking to create 36 units of affordable housing for senior citizens. They're actually going to be purchasing manufactured homes and developing their Sequoia project in Tumwater. And then the fourth project is Vital Housing, the Courtside Apartments. It's an acquisition of an existing apartment complex, 211 units, 212 units, excuse me. That has been approved by the RHC. That was approved by you a couple of months ago. That is also ready to be under contract later this year. So wanted to kind of update you on that, get your approval with this plan. We've talked to Brandon Weber. All of these projects are eligible under the ARPA kind of SLURF requirements. We will need to do a justification for the two, the Housing Authority and Vital Housing projects since they're over a million dollars and they're capital projects, but we think they qualify for that justification. So really wanted to come to you today and update that. We will be bringing contracts. So just so you're aware, and then we'll also need to amend the interlocal agreement with Lacey Olympia and Tumwater to identify that we will not be using those ARPA funds to remove some of those requirements, the ARPA requirements from that agreement. So that's a...
Can you share with the Board, though, what the plan is? It does not diminish our commitment to the Franz Anderson project, but it is shifting to another funding source that we have?
Correct. Thank you for that. Yes, so the 3.5 million that was going to be used, the ARPA mine, we would use a combination of our local home fund dollars, 14.06 and 2060, which is a local document recording fee funds. So those were the fund sources that we're going to fund these four other projects. So those will now fund the Franz Anderson project and the ARPA funds will fund those four projects.
That's too fast for my pants. So can I go back to the four projects? Homes First, Housing Authority, Sequoia North?
Okay, you have attachment to your agenda on the second page.
No, I don't. Oh, yes, I do.
So here's the chart that he's basically going over. Tom, will you start on the chart again?
Yep.
I know you know these numbers really well. Just kind of walk it through.
Yep.
For Rob's point, just kind of talk about, to me, the takeaway is how we're transitioning the funds and the opportunity that we have here.
Thank you. So sorry for going so quickly. The Homes First, the fourplex, is the award amount. The original award amount was 635,969. That will, all of that will be funded out of ARPA, the SLURF funds, that full 635,969.
First time I'm hearing SLURF. Is that something different than what we've been talking about as ARPA all along the way? Where's this coming from?
It's ARPA.
It's ARPA.
It's the ARPA Recovery Fund. It's one of many acronyms that can be used, but it's the same fund we've been talking about for the last two or three years.
Okay.
Sorry, I'll use ARPA. We've distinguished kind of in our office because we have home ARPA and sometimes we have another pot of ARPA.
There are many types of ARPA. That was a federal bill, like an umbrella bill.
So the second Homes First project is 375,000, again, to acquire a single-family home. It's a three-bedroom home. And so the full amount of that award will be with the ARPA funds. The Housing Authority for Sequoia North, again, 36 units of housing that will be created. That award amount was just over 1.6 million dollars and the full amount of that funding will be the ARPA funds. For Vital Housing, this is Courtside Apartments, so 212 units of housing. The total award amount for that was 1,357,669. To get to the 3.5 million of that amount, 835,286 will be the ARPA funds for that project. And then for the Franz Anderson project, we will be providing just over 2,503,419 of local home fund dollars, 771,580 of 14.06. 14.06 is essentially a sales tax retention. Rather than remitting that sales tax to the state, we're able to keep that for affordable housing projects. And then 225,000 of what we used to call 2060 is now called 5386. It's a local document recording fee.
Good change. Way to make it more understandable.
So that's 3.5 million?
Just pick another number, set of random numbers.
This is not called SLURF.
I remember SLURF, though.
If I could just pause. Rob, can you just recast it based on the opportunity that we have here? Because I don't... Oh, sorry. Mickey, I have a question before I do that.
I don't have a question, just a comment. So Rob, you go ahead.
So I think, simply put, this is an opportunity because of a timing issue that we don't want to leave any ARPA dollars on the table. And so we can basically do an even swap and change the funding sources so that we can continue to provide the same products into the community in terms of affordable housing and meet the deadlines and obligation dates that we have. What was the trigger again? Why would you do this? What precipitated this discussion here today? The trigger being specifically, as with any complex affordable housing project, right? Everyone is compiling any number of different sources of funding. And a big part of that is that application to the low-income housing tax credits or for those tax credits is one of a component of that. If you're not successful because there's limited number of tax credits in any given cycle, it just meant that that project wasn't going forward, but they still need it. And so this was just an opportunity to give them a little bit more time, be able to have the, utilize the dollars that we have more flexibility with in terms of timing.
How much money were they trying to get that they need for...
The total project is approximately 30 million dollars. And so there, I can't remember the specific dollar amounts, but probably in this, you know, less than 10 out of the trust fund, but then probably another 12 to 15 out of the low-income housing tax credit. So it's a substantial amount of the funding.
And they usually, most of those projects will, you know, do some bank lending at the very end to kind of complete the entire picture, which I would say probably in many ways ties into the Vital Housing project because there is an affordability component to any of those projects. And once you get to the end of the affordability, the developers often then start to pull out, which means that those units could be sold and become market rate. And this is a way to preserve that affordability in the community. Yeah, so, you know, we are happy that staff are identifying that since funding didn't come through for a set of projects and they could apply again and get additional funding to kick in the ARPA, rather than lose the ARPA dollars, they're going to transition those to other projects, move those fund, without available funding, to a potential project in the future if it gets funded. And so when we went over the number of units coming into the county based on these projects, the team was able to keep those numbers whole based on finding a way to support the projects in light of the fact that this other project didn't get funded. So this really is like just crosswalking, funding's over here, funding's over here. If we can switch it, it gives more time for the others to move since the ARPA funding. Brandon Weber first said SLURF. I was like, what are you talking about? Because it is more technical term than, as the internal auditor, he's like, that's the official name. Like, I get it, but it's ARPA, under the ARPA umbrella. It gives an opportunity for them to use the money now.
Who's from Mejia?
Thanks. Just on that note, I really want to thank staff for their work in finding projects that would work. Ever since they initially found out, you know, that, you know, they've really been working to make sure and find puzzle pieces that would actually fit within all the requirements of ARPA. And this took a lot of work with our budget team as well as external stakeholders finding these projects. So and I think the best part about this, it also holds our commitment with the City of Olympia and the Regional Housing Council. So just big props to staff and our budget team, you know, and our external stakeholders for working with us as we try to find different avenues.
I agree with you, Commissioner Mejia. This is a positive thing of them thinking on their feet. So thank you, Tom, and to your team, Alex, and the rest. It is complicated, though, when you look at all the numbers and the switching that's going on. So apologize for all the acronyms and the random designations of different funds.
And I'll just confirm that we have talked to all of these agencies that are on board. These are federal funds, so they come with some extra rules. Homes First, Housing Authority is well familiar, those funds. These are, three of these are acquisition projects, so there's no construction involved, which also makes them good fits for these funds. It reduces some of the regulatory burden for these projects.
And I would also call it to the Board's attention again, Table 2 on the last page, which really talks about the Franz Anderson project going forward. That's, those local dollars are extremely important as it goes, they go back out to apply for those low-income housing tax credits. It just makes them that much more competitive ultimately.
And the one, one other thing I did want to point out, just so there's not confusion kind of down the road. So we're talking about the 3.5 million of the ARPA funds that were committed to the Franz Anderson project this past year. The Regional Housing Council also approved an additional 1.5 million of local funds for the Franz Anderson project. So in total, the county will have 5 million dollars in the Franz Anderson project, again, to go to that kind of local leverage component. However, today, we're only talking about that 3.5 million of the ARPA-funded component. When we come back and say, hey, we're putting 5 million in this project, you're not, you're not thinking, hey, I thought it was 3.5.
So when you have that kind of allocation by the Regional Housing Council, but it's contingent on LEHI getting these applications, I mean, are there time limits with that? Can that money just sit there? You know, like, what if they fail for another year? And then we're really going to try the next year. Is that okay for that money to not be utilized?
Yeah, so then it becomes kind of a decision of the Regional Housing Council. There's, so there's that time limits on that money because it is local dollars. We have that flexibility. But at a certain point, there will be a decision for the Regional Housing Council saying, hey, this project's not able to move forward. We're going to look to reallocate those funds to another project. So there's not a hard deadline on the use of those funds. It becomes more of what's the status of the project? Do we have faith that this is still a viable project that can move forward?
And right now, we have tiny homes there, right?
Yes. Part of the property, there are 50 tiny homes. So this property would be built essentially across the streets. So the property is large enough to accommodate the 50 tiny homes as well as this building. The long-term plan is that there'll be a phase two that where the tiny homes, there'll be a second building on the location where the tiny homes currently are. So the long-term plan is to have two permanent supportive housing properties on this, on this piece of land. But right now, we're talking about funding for the, for the phase one or the first building.
Okay, great to know. Other questions for Tom?
I have a question. You might have said this already, but Table 1 shows that the SLURF amount for Vital Housing is 835,000, but the award amount is 1.3 million. Did you already touch on, can you just like let us know where that gap is, where the other funding comes from?
That other funding is going to come from the local home fund dollars.
Good question, Commissioner. I think as Commissioners, if we have something like this, again, we'll make it available on PowerPoints. I think it's probably easier to see and then you can point to. Yeah, there are a lot of moving parts and the money is complicated when you realize what sources are coming from. So understand the questions and appreciate Tom and the team's patience and walking us through.
Anything else from the Board?
Nope. Good, good job of explaining.
What's the next step that we'll hear about?
So the next steps is you'll be seeing some contracts, probably in September, coming for your approval. The Homes First ones are out, ready to go, so we'll bring those to you. The other contracts will be coming for your approval, probably in October, November. And then we'll be working with, through the Regional Housing Council to amend that interlocal agreement to update the funding source.
And Chair, at this point, what we would like to receive from the Board is a thumbs up that they are good with this approach or thumbs down that they're not and they want even more information on, would like a different approach so that then Tom can move forward with the steps he just outlined.
Okay, my thumbs up. Anyone else? Three in the room? Four? Commissioner Edwards?
Yep, we had to go.
Okay, all five. So we'll need to amend our, our plan to include these. Okay, very good. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, item is the only other thing on the morning's agenda. I'll just start. There's a Salary Commission meeting, I understand, tonight. And I'm just wondering if anyone was intending to participate in the past. I've gone just to give information about what Commissioners do, just so the Salary Commission has that information. I've never advocated for anything salary-wise, but just to provide information. I know Commissioner Edwards has come and had a slightly different message, but I won't go if someone else is going to go and give information, but I will go if no one else is going. So I just thought I would ask if any of my seatmates are planning on attending tonight. Okay.
I am not.
And I don't, I don't believe I am either, Chair.
Okay, very good. Well, I'll just probably just go and just give an overview of our jobs so that they have that for their reference. Some people don't know what Commissioners even do, so. Yep.
Is that on Zoom as well or is it just in person?
I would guess it's hybrid.
Sure, but you can ask Maria. And Chair, going forward, what we'll do is we will have Maria's team send something out to the Commission just to put that on the agenda so we can coordinate with Commissioners because I think it is valuable, as you stated, what we want. Commissioner Fornier wasn't aware. I'm sure others may not have been. We don't want to blindside you with that information.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure how it got on my calendar, but it was... My understanding, they're going to take the, I think, testimony from whoever tonight. I know the auditor always gives a presentation and the assessor's usually there.
Yeah, we'll send out the link if there is a virtual option, just so the Commissioners can have it.
Yeah, I saw that and I thought it looked interesting because there would be a 30-minute presentation on the state Salary Commission process. So I thought that would be good, just to like learn about and have that context.
Yeah, maybe I'll stick around for that. I usually just give my five minutes in need, but I don't want them to feel any kind of scrutiny or pressure, but that would be good information to hear. Okay, any other Commissioner items?
Yeah, the property on Carpenter Road. I understand that there was some kind of walkthrough there. I don't know, like, where the discussion is, how I'm at. I have, still have some reservations about giving property away. You know, I don't, I'm not convinced that we're in a financial position to just gift property if we could be selling it. And then kind of the concept and the location seem a little problematic to me. So I don't know, like, where that's at or at what point we have another discussion on it.
I'm in the context. So the, this was an opportunity that Kehodi built, or whomever...
New Horizons, I think.
New Horizons, but they had not seen or had eyes on the Carpenter property to date. So this was just an opportunity for them to see what the landscape is apart from a map. So Commissioners, I think where we're at with that is there's no decisions that have been made. What we're doing is, this one has taken a bit of time because we're trying to work in partnership with the City of Lacey to, based on comments that the Commissioners made, gosh, a couple of months ago about the potential Kohoti Village project. It was to first reach out to city staff and see if there was an interest. While in talking with the city manager, he wanted to have a couple of council members take a look at an established Kohoti Village project. And so Rob immediately started to plan that out. Unfortunately, we got a meeting scheduled, but there were some scheduling conflicts on the City of Lacey's side, and so that meeting had to be rescheduled. In the meantime, Kohoti Village started to make comments just from the initial outreach in the community that they were coming to the county, they were coming to the City of Lacey. So Rob reached out and said, this is purely conceptual conversation. You should not be messaging anything verbally or in writing. And so they agreed to that. But in that timeframe, because the meeting has taken so long, they just said, well, can we come and see the site to get an idea of what they would be, they would have to work with? Our desire still is to talk to the City of Lacey to figure out where they're at and then bring that information back to the Commissioners to figure out, based on input from the city, what are options for that property? And could that property be potentially something that we enter into a partnership with Kohoti Village? What that partnership would look like really hasn't been mapped out. And absent Kohoti Village signaling things in the community at meetings, we wanted to keep this at a very conversational level so that you will have the information by which to make a decision. It's unfortunately taken a lot longer than we would have liked. We would have preferred to be briefing you about two weeks ago, but the meeting that was scheduled a little ways back, that's where the scheduling conflict occurred. And that has not been rescheduled yet, the tour.
Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I think Commissioner Fornier expressed my concerns. Thanks.
Okay.
And just a point of information really for the Board is that that property, that parcel, is actually held by the Road Fund, which adds a different level of, you know, complexity, right? In terms of fund ownership and potential disposition. So we can, you know, absent the City of Lacey being available... So we can, you know, absent the City of Lacey being available to meet with us, and it's probably going to be another three weeks out plus before we schedule that, we're happy to bring it at a future briefing if the Board would like to discuss the Carpenter project and how it relates to Quahodie. We can do that at this point. We just don't have information from the cities.
So having it owned by the Road Fund, does that mean that we would have to pay the Road Fund? So, so you can't, there's no, you can't just say, here, Quahodie Village, here is a piece of property to build on. We would have to assess the value of the property, and then the general fund would have to pay the Road Fund for the property to be able to transition it?
I can't predispose what that conversation or outcome would be, but...
We haven't done the research on that, Commissioner, partly because we didn't know what the Board's appetite would be. Where we wanted to queue this up is, City of Lacey is or is not in favor of something there? It was exploratory. And then have the deeper conversation about what does the commissioners want to do with that property and is Quahodie an option? And we could do the research to get there. Unfortunately, like I said, without the information from the City of Lacey, we're still not, we're not aware. And because there's been some opposition with other types of projects, historically has it been explained to me, that's where there was an interest of the commissioners to talk to Lacey first before we had the second conversation.
Commissioner Edwards?
I think that the county managers expressed it pretty good. I'm not interested in having any follow-up meetings on this topic until after Lacey has that input. Thanks.
So we'll get that rescheduled then. And again, it's, it's not necessarily with staff, that the city manager wanted to bring two, specifically two council members out. He also wanted to take it as part of that tour in existing Quahodie Village complex. I think it's in the neighboring county. Is that correct?
In Sheldon.
Sheldon. Just to get an idea. But none of that is commitment. All of that is simply exploratory, what, what they are, would be supportive of or not, to then bring that back to have a deeper conversation with the commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, that's a good update. Any other Commissioner Items this morning? Do we have a check-in? We do have a check-in today, too? Or is that canceled?
That's canceled.
Okay. That's on my calendar. Good to know. Okay. Then we're back at nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
And did confirm that the, there is a virtual option in the agenda for the meeting, so we'll get that, I'll just have Maria send that out to all the commissioners, which you have the link.
For Salary Commission?
Salary Commission, yes.
Very good. Nope. Going once, going twice?
It's old.
Turned. 10:33.